Yeah.
Okay, good evening.
Good evening.
Six thirty, I want to call to order, meeting number eighteen seventy-six of the East Windsor Planning and Zoning Commission. We have a quorum, we have all five regular members. We're located live in the John Daly Meeting Room of East Windsor Town Hall, as well as on the Zoom platform. Do we have any added agenda items?
Let's see.
We do not. Okay. Legal notices, there were two legal notices. There's one, East Windsor Planning and Zoning Commission. Public hearing previously scheduled for Tuesday, June eleventh, twenty twenty-four at six thirty has been postponed. And will be held on Tuesday, June twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four at six thirty. Details regarding how to attend will be published on the commission's agenda and will be made available on the town's website. The PZ twenty twenty-four dash zero eight, the applicant owner is Jared Brodeur, excuse me, my pronunciation, NNCR Associates LLC, located at seventy-four Bridge Street, is requesting a special use permit for a commercial use entertainment venue to serve food, drink, and alcohol in accordance with section eight oh five Alcohol Sales of the East Windsor zoning regulations, map eleven, block three, lot eight, zone WHPC. A full copy of this application is available on the Planning and Zoning Commission's webpage of the East Windsor website, of the town website. All interested persons may attend this meeting to provide verbal or written comments regarding this application. Second legal notice is the East Windsor Planning and Zoning Commission will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, June twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three at six thirty PM. Details regarding how to attend will be published on the commission's agenda and will be made available on the town's website. PZ twenty twenty-four dash zero nine, applicant owner is the Kemet Family Limited Partnership and Stanley Kemet Junior, Kemet and Sons Construction, located at two ninety-seven North Road, is requesting a special use permit for soil management, regrading, and filling of existing construction yard property, map one seventeen, block thirty-six, lot thirty-four B and thirty-four C, zone A one, A two. A full copy of the application is available on the Planning and Zoning Commission's webpage on the town's website. All interested persons may attend this meeting and provide verbal or written comments regarding this application. This appeared in the Journal Inquirer, uh, June eleventh, and again on June seventeenth, twenty twenty-four.
First time, June twenty-third, twenty twenty-three.
Correct, okay. Okay, public participation. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on a topic that is not on tonight's agenda? Is there anyone online that would like to speak on a topic that is not on tonight's agenda? Okay, we'll move on to approval of minutes. We have minutes of our June eleventh meeting. Does anyone have any alterations or corrections?
Oh.
Okay, yeah, I did not find any other. Okay, if nobody has any other comments to be made, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from, from the Tuesday, June eleventh, twenty twenty-four meeting, who, which was meeting number eighteen seventy-five as presented.
There's a motion to approve the minutes, do we have a second?
Second.
Good Dave, any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Yes. Okay. There were no new applications received, nothing under performance bonds or permit extension, road acceptance. Are no continued public hearings, so moving on to new public hearings, first one, we have PZ twenty twenty-four dash zero eight. Applicant owner Jared Brodeur and RC Associates LLC, located at seventy-four Bridge Street, is requesting a special use permit for a commercial use entertainment venue to serve food, drink, and alcohol in accordance with section eight oh five Alcohol Sales of the East Windsor zoning regulations, map eleven, block three, lot eight, zone WHPC. Who's here to speak on behalf of this application?
Jared, would you sign in?
Oh, yeah, sorry.
In sheet.
Right here on the table here.
I'll just. Yeah, so we're looking to, uh, we're looking to have alcohol on the property, um, food on the property. Um, we are a tabletop gaming venue, so we do like board games, card games, uh, role-playing games. Um, there is no other property in New England that I'm aware of that has an alcohol on it, like those types of games. Um, if you know anything about the movies, instead of now, Marvel movies are huge, Star Wars movies, except most fans of those movies are all elves. So being able to host games that are surrounded, you know, with those themes and also people that have, um, alcohol on site and food on site. People could come in for an evening and enjoy those games and also alcohol at the same time to be beneficial to us. One of the alcohol, uh, types in particular that we're excited to carry is mead, which is up there in the Ren Fair scene. Um, you can't get it year-round because the carrots are prop. So being able to have it on-site year-round means that people that are used to going around there, it's that kind of stuff that enjoy mead can actually travel to East Windsor and enjoy the ball state. So. It's the, uh, the intent.
Start that in, Stacy, do you have any questions? Dave?
Um. How is this going to be impacted with the rezoning of Warehouse Point? No problems with, uh, changing the warehouse point? Okay. That was my only question at first. Could you?
I'm just curious, um. By tabletop games, is that video games, is that like Monopoly with, you know, a board and?
Sure, sure.
Money, um, I, I'm just curious what it is.
No, we got this question a lot, well, first of all, we've been in business since two thousand ten.
Um. Are you any?
We're in East Windsor currently, we're over by Elizabeth Restaurant Plaza there.
Okay.
So we're literally just, it's a much larger property.
Yep.
Uh, we can host a bunch of bigger tournaments and stuff, it is not video games, so this is all unplugged stuff, this is social interaction. People from kids to, I'm fifty years old and I enjoy these games, several of my customers are in their sixties, seventies. Um, all different genres from sci-fi to fantasy to World War Two to like, it's endless, there's, you can really do anything.
So is it games like those puzzle kind of rooms where you have to find your way out or?
Yeah.
It's just a curiosity.
No, totally, I love explaining it, that's what I do for a living, is explaining, because several people don't know what it is. Um, with the resurgence of the, the shows like, um, Stranger Things and Big Bang Theory.
Yeah.
These are geek games, these are games that when I was a kid, you played them in your basement with your, you know, your friends and, and you didn't tell people you played them because you were a nerd if you told people, now geeks are cool.
Well, I don't know.
Yeah, so Dungeons and Dragons.
Dungeons and Dragons.
Dungeons and Dragons is one of them, there are board games, uh, similar to like Monopoly or cheesy or Sorry, but they're more involved than that. Monopoly's close because it's got the whole business aspect and all that, but the simpler games that we grew up in this country playing, like Trouble and Sorry.
Yeah, that's what I think of as.
Those are for kids, right? So these are adults.
Okay.
Resource management games where you're trying to build a farm against somebody else's trying to build a farm, weather events and all that. I, I, it's endless topics, but yes, it's, it's.
So do you create them?
What's that?
You create these games?
No, these are games that exist.
Oh.
Uh, so in Europe, board games are not what they are in this country.
Oh.
Um, they're getting more popular here, um, they have that, of course, I don't know if you guys have ever heard of the game Ticket to Ride or Settlers of Catan. Those are the ones that, that are Euro games that came to the US and hit it huge. So, uh, those are board games, then there's miniature tabletop games which are where, I'm sure you've seen a movie, Forty Year Old Virgin comes to mind, Steve Carell, where he's got the magnifying glass and he's painting the little miniatures and they're poking fun at him for doing it, we do that. Um, we're proud of them. So I've got tons of soldiers and stuff that you paint and each soldier represents a, a unit on the battlefield and you play on a terrain top that looks similar to a, um, model railroad train sets, a little trees and buildings and all that, and you roll dice to see if this guy can hit this guy, and if you do, you're rolling for the board and you battle it out. Um, card games like Magic the Gathering, maybe Pokemon you've heard of before.
I've heard it, but they were cards, playing cards.
Yes, exactly, so those are the collectible card games we do, we do Magic Gathering, Pokemon.
There is a game.
There are, yes, I, I think it originated as a game, I could be wrong about that, but I think it was a game first. Um, and then Dungeons and Dragons is the big one, that's the role-playing game where you're playing the role of a single adventurer in a scenario and we pitch the scenario to you and you act within that scenario. It's like being in a play without a script, they just tell you what the scene is and you.
Take it from there.
Yep. Interesting, so those are the four major genres, so no, there's no video games in situations.
And it's the same, I'll say, people who come every week or it's like assorted people come?
We have both, so we have, we have a very, we have a local following that, uh, of course keeps us, keeps us going, right? There's regulars that come by.
Yeah, that's what I figured, they would understand the game.
Yeah, exactly, and they play, and like I said, we have tournaments and leagues, so leagues, you come in and play twice a week in a league and it goes on for four months or something like that, at the end you get a prize, trophies, um, store credit, that kind of stuff. Um, and then we also do, uh, like open play. And then the, the thing is with the Battle Standard, what we're doing different is we're making it an experience. So when you come in, you're going to see dragon heads on the walls and you're going to see Star Wars lightsabers on, you know, like, we, we really decorate the place to make it feel like you're somewhere special, not just like.
In someone's basement.
Exactly, exactly, it's time to get out of the basement. And so working towards.
I'm good, yeah. Okay, um, well, I, my questions are kind of more towards the, the application of what you're looking to accomplish here. Um, you mentioned Pokemon specifically, my, my grandkids play Pokemon.
Sure, yeah.
You're asking for alcohol, how are you going to segregate out that people of underage are not exposed to people that are consuming alcohol?
Yeah, so we have, so there's two floors to the property, um, there's a, there's a tournament side that we've built on the lower level. Um, and that area is going to be alcohol-free, so if you, if you don't want to be around somebody that's having a drink at another table, you absolutely have a place you can go to beef, you know, away from that. Um, otherwise, it's no different than going to Chili's or another restaurant or something and sitting at a table and your family is not paying anything to drink and somebody next to you is getting a beer. It's, it's still a restaurant in that way.
So in order, you have to show an ID.
Oh, yeah, okay, so if, when it comes to the IDs and all that stuff, um, our plan is to use something called Tokenworks. Uh, Tokenworks is used by, uh, West Front Field Cinemas. Uh, what is, every time you go to order a drink, they take your license, whether you've been to the bar or not, they scan it and it tracks, um, your age, it verifies the ID, and then it also tracks that you've got a beverage. So we haven't nailed down the specifics of what it is, but we're thinking it's going to be like three drinks within three hours is your limit. So if you want to come in and you want to, you're only going to be there for a few hours, you want to have three drinks within that time, that's fine, but if you, you know, we're not going to serve shots, we're not looking for people to come in and power belly up your star, so to speak.
Yeah.
This is for adults that enjoy gaming, to be able to be adults and game. The way we figure it is there's probably several, um, couples that only get one night out a week or one night out a month where they can get a babysitter, they happen to be gamers, it's at the same time and they want to go out and they want to merge their evenings together. They're, they're going out for a drink and they're.
So are you intending just beer and wine or are you intending full liquor?
So we did originally go beer and wine to the state, but they told us because we have food to just go full cafe license, so at this time, just doing the full cafe license. But we are looking to stay, we're trying to get exclusive partnerships. So, um, recently we went and way of my spirits, which is up in, in, uh, Bloomfield, on Dado Road, and we maybe carry just their stuff, that kind of thing. So it would be full bar, but no interest in selling, like I said, shots or anything like that.
And would somebody be allowed to come in and just buy alcohol and not participate in the gaming?
Yeah, I guess that, that would be something that could happen, we do have a bar with stools in front of it, but it's not a, it's not a full bar, it's a table, probably half the size of this with six stools out of it. So technically that could happen, but where I see that happening would be, for instance, we had a, there was a Romanian family actually used to come in and the daughter was big into painting the miniatures, but the mom and aunt had no interest. But they would come in and let the daughter paint and they would just sit at the table with her, which takes up two chairs for us where people can't paint, you know? So, i- i- but they're, they have to stay there because their kid's, you know, only nine years old or something. Now they can sit at the bar, which is right over across from the painting table, they can watch their child, and they can pop knob and just have it, you know, relax. So.
Now, as far as the food goes, are you talking, having a commercial kitchen or bringing in catered food or how's the food side going to work?
We actually have, so we're doing everything by turbo chef, so it'd be turbo chef and panini press, we're doing flatbreads, um, um, paninis or sandwiches three ways, if you will, deli style, oven baker, or panini, um, hot pretzels, that kind of stuff. The turbo chef is the company that makes the ovens for like Starbucks, where they can heat your food and make mince. Um, but we're using better ingredients and we're making the food on-site and heating it with the turbo chef as opposed to like Starbucks, it's all prepackaged and they just throw it in. So it should be better quality food than that, um, but the same style cooking.
Andy, do you have any, uh, any questions? Anybody else have any follow-ups?
Some food requires a health department license.
Yeah.
Yep.
They need, they need the liquor permit, they need the, the health department license. All right, this is a, uh, public hearing, is anyone from the audience would like to, uh, comment on this application?
Paul Anderson, eighty-nine Main Street, Dogbrook. I'm most in favor of this, I don't think I'll be participating, but since we're a pro-business town, it sounds like a winner to me.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Anyone else? Anyone online like to, uh, comment on this application? Um, one follow-up question, uh, what do you plan to be your hours of operation?
So we're currently open eleven AM to eleven PM daily, um, with the addition of the food in the bar side, we may do Friday, Saturday, open till midday. That'd be the only change we think. We've been doing eleven to eleven daily, those are days, Thanksgiving Day, uh, for, I don't know how many years, but that's our standard.
Yes.
How about the amplified music and like PA system, is it that kind of thing where the noise could?
Nope, so there's, uh, we do, we do have ambient music in the background, but unless somebody is offended by a very quiet or the ring soundtrack, I don't think.
Okay.
Uh, it's, it's like walking in.
Neighbors aren't going to be hearing it.
It's like walking, you know, Walmart Target and just whatever they have. Just keep it in.
Okay. Uh, nobody has anything else, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing for application PZ twenty twenty-four dash eight, a special use permit at seventy-four Bridge Street for alcohol service.
We have a motion to close the public hearing, do we have a second?
Second.
Dave, any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The hearing is closed. Does anyone need any further clarification or anything else, uh, or ready to vote on this application?
Yep, ready to go.
Okay, then I'll entertain a motion on this application.
I'll make a motion to approve application PZ twenty twenty-four dash eight, a special use permit at seventy-four Bridge Street for alcohol service. The zone is the Warehouse Point. What's the C stand for? Or, or district, um, this approval is granted subject to the conformance with the application materials as may be modified by the, the commission and this approval and the following conditions slash modifications. Condition one, prior to the issuance of any permits, the owner applicant shall file a copy of the certificate of approval on the land records. And two, should there be live entertainment or amplified music, it shall be controlled to ensure it does not emanate from the bill.
We have a motion to approve, do we have a second?
Second.
Right, Dave, any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Yeah, your application is approved.
Yeah, they're live, right.
Hey. Next public hearing we have is PZ twenty twenty-four dash zero nine, the applicant owner is Kemet and Sons Construction, Kemet Family Limited Partnership and Stanley Kemet Junior, located at two ninety-seven North Road, is requesting a special use permit for regrading and filling existing construction yard property, located on map one seventeen, block thirty-six, lot thirty-four B and C, zone A one, A two. Was here to speak on behalf of this application.
Uh, Stephen Lee, which I work with Mr.
Would you please sign in also?
Yeah. I'm sorry, I kind of knew this. Thank you, thank you. Interesting proposals for a soil management facility at two ninety-seven North Road in Dogbrook. This property in question is set on a parcel with about seventy-three to eight acres. Uh, which your proposal is filling and regrading a portion of it, which ends up being about twenty point nine acres of the property. Proposal is for a soil management facility in which we, we wish to take in clean stuff for the purpose of filling, ingraining this parcel for the twenty point one acres, future reuse. And that would be a little ways in the distance. That's going to be a project that takes quite a bit of time and I'll leave that to both Jay and Peter. Uh, I just want to clarify a couple things because I, I've been in the industry a long time, uh, in the construction industry for about thirty-nine years. Uh, I want to just bring up something that when I speak to people about what it is that we're interested in doing here, it ends up being the first question, and it was the first question that I had, being new to the industry. It's not a landfill, okay, that's because it does sound like that that's what it is that we're proposing. We're looking to take and clean fill essentially, which is just their, you know, landfill per se is solid waste and, uh, by definition, it says that, you know, taking a glass, paper, metal and, you know, bringing it in in layers and covering it with dirt in order for, to minimize contamination to the earth around it. That's not what we're proposing, we're only looking for clean. And I'll let Peter speak to that, he's, uh, he's under our, our LEP, he deals with soils exclusively, so he can speak, uh, it's fine. Uh, Kemet family's been in this construction industry for nearly eighty years, this property has been in use for, for, since the forties. It's been in use for construction and still is to this day. At this point, we take in material that can be concrete, asphalt, things of that nature that crushed down and reused and resold. Uh, that's the, that's the beauty of modern construction as we know it now in that, um, recycling is the biggest thing, it's the thing of the future. When I began in this industry, it was natural products and we stripped, uh, pits and forests and everything else of natural resources. Years ago, uh, we decided in this industry that recycling was going to be the thing of the future because we're, we're stripping this land of everything it needs, so taking in, uh, used concrete, used asphalt, things of that nature, crushing it down, using them for base materials and things like that are, are, that's the norm nowadays. So that's what we do currently as a construction yard, in addition to selling and reselling material, uh, natural materials as well that we bring into the yard and resell, uh, just because of its location. I would like to turn this over to Peter, but, and Peter's going to speak to the environmental business to clarify this.
Yeah, I just have some smaller printouts that kind of go with the plain same.
So, thank you very much.
See you to describe this part of the. Um, so, Peter J, I work for SLR Consulting, licensed environmental professional with DEP, or not with DEP, registered with DEP. Uh, I've been doing this for about twenty-four years now. Uh, one of the biggest hurdles that we face with environmental side is really the development portion, the remediation and environmental brownfields that's really designated DEP approvals, goes through an entire process to identify and how it's, how it affects, how things are managed. The bigger gray area that we've always found is just street development, whether it's a soccer field that's being changed over to turf, whether it's a high school track that's being changed over, uh, development just for residential itself. The bigger question always comes up, well, what's the soil quality in that regard and how is it going to get managed? So that's where the state has different definitions on how it's managed itself, so solid waste, Steve was talking about, so you have clean bill. From a solid waste standpoint, it's just any soil that's generated, that can be reused on the site without much limitation. Now, within that clean fill designation, which put the soil management plan that you had, it's part of the application process, talks about polluted soils and then natural soils. So the natural soils is when somebody tests it and it's literally not detect across the board into your background condition, probably middle of nowhere in the forest, somewhere like that. So you have zero detections, you have metals that are kind of generally around the same concentrations of what you see in the background. Then you have polluted soils, so polluted soils, there's cleanup criteria that's established by DEP where you have detections of some kind of contaminants or pollutants or compounds, whatever it is. And they're above the detection limit for the laboratory, but they're below that cleanup criteria. And that's strictest criteria even, so residential is the strictest criteria. And then for GA use, which is like a groundwater classification, so those are polluted soils. Now to reuse polluted soils that's not on your property, you have to get commissioner approval and then those can be reused in the guidance with the RSRs. So that's where the soil management talks about taking in the polluted soils, those are a little bit more regulated. And that's where we would have to get a commissioner approval. They're placed on the site as part of the, the filling activity and used for grading in accordance with those regs. Natural soil, which would also be taken in, that can be reused, screened, processed, potentially resold, but it would be in this pile as well. So it's different designations for what material we're coming in from that aspect. What would not be taken is anything that's over criteria, ends up being contaminated by definition for hazardous waste, which is, forget that, that's just not part of this. So on the first page of the, the kind of the layout that I had there, it's just a general site location to get yourselves familiar with where we're at, I think you're all familiar probably with, kind of a property and it's been around for a long time, so. I think we take a look at it, you have the Scantic River off to the north and then you have the site kind of centered in the middle. Uh, the next aerial photograph, that's the next page of Ross, kind of shows the overall site, right, the degree. What you can focus on this, that it's disturbed, I mean, it's been actively worked for, they said eighty-plus years. So everywhere that's, we're talking about the soil management portion of this property, it's already been either trees removed, earth moved around, it's just been manipulated, so it's not under a natural state condition. It's just been manipulated. So it's not under a natural state condition. On the eastern side, I have kind of a hatched area. That's the former landfill that's on the property itself. But it's not part of this application in that we're not going to be touching that. That's not part of the process. It's not part of the grading. It's kind of its own entity over there. The purpose for showing that as well is that in order to reuse polluted soil on sites, you have to have previously documented impacts to that site. So you can't take polluted and put it on clean essentially. So that's one of the requirements under the RSRs, and that's where active construction yard, you have movement of material, you have movement of asphalt fragments. All sorts of stuff's been moved around over time. Then you have the operations of the actual maintenance garage on the west side, and that's not part of the application as well. It's limited to that filling area that's shown in the dashed. So I also wanted to go over, as you may be aware, I don't know how many [inaudible 00:01:41] before, but this plan is under previous application in twenty nineteen and expired in twenty twenty two. So I wanted to highlight some of the previous application approval that was there. So that's the next one that's shown on there. So under anchor in twenty nineteen, North Road Materials came in. They were actually approved for their plan at the time to take in material. They took in, let's say twenty seven thousand cubic yards over that time, placed it at the site. Um, that's just the header of the application. I don't know how many were here at the time, but it's generally the same premise, but we've actually pulled it back a little bit on, once we got involved between Jay and myself. Next page just shows the overall site plan of what was obviously approved. One thing to note in that page, I believe on the eastern side, that grading went all the way up to where that existing landfill that closed the landfill is. We have basically removed that portion of where that grading would match to make sure there's a distinct boundary from where that material is going to end up. We reduced the volume overall. The original applications were approximately one point four eight million cubic yards of material to be, uh, filled. We've reduced that now to
four, forty, forty five.
Four hundred and eighty five thousand, approximately. It's another application for the exact, uh, the next page. Or the next slide. So I'd just another show, I don't know why that one's in there. Next one. Yeah, but it's just again to show the basic plan, the previous, which was approved, what that looked like over an aerial or aerial depiction of the site. So again, you can see where the east side, where that landfill kind of exists, closed, is still wooded now. It's kind of revegetated at this point. That we're not disturbing any further. All the phasing that we're proposing is going to be within that footprint where you see it's already been actively either mined, filled, just been made available in time. Now, the next slide goes into the current application.
Good evening, uh, JR, three JR Russo and Associates here representing, uh, the Kemet family. Uh, with regard to this application special permit for soil management facility. Peters, Peter and Steve have given you a pretty good background of, of what the application is about. I think I'm going to give you a little more history, and some of you probably know this, maybe some of you don't, but Peter talked a little bit about the old landfill which has been capped and has been closed and probably started in the early fifties or somewhere thereabouts.
Nineteen forty six.
Nineteen forty six. It was owned by, uh, the Kemet family then. Skip's dad owned it. And it was actually leased land to the town of East Windsor. The landfill was started and run by the town of East Windsor for a number of years. Uh, the Kemets took it over when the town, I guess ceased to lease it. I'm not sure exactly what the details were of that, and it was closed back in nineteen eighty five, eighty three, eighty five, somewhere in that vicinity. And as, as Peter pointed out, I'm going to point to it here. If you look at the board I've got here. It's located way over here to the east, the east side of, of the property. And our grading plan doesn't go anywhere near that. Uh, we're a long distance away from it. And, and I'm going to go through a little bit of that with you. Could we go on to the next screen, Ruth? Okay, good. So this is the overall grading plan. And I struggle here because I need glasses to read close and I need glasses to see far. And it doesn't work very well. So I'm going to come over here. You can look up there at the screen. This is basically the grading plan, the overall plan overlaid on an aerial to kind of give you a feel for where you are. So here's route one forty. We're going to the east. Skidnack River's out here. The old cap landfill is right in here. The entrance to the facility is here. And I think an important thing to note is it's a paved entryway because there's certain requirements in your regulations in the S and E section that tell us that we've got to have a paved in gravel for a certain distance, which normally we would call a tracking pad. Here we've got a paved entryway that's hundreds of feet long off of one forty. So it more than meets the requirement to keep any tracking for any vehicles that are coming in and out and tracking out onto the highway. So the entrance is located here. Skip's office is right here. And then the phasing, and again, we're looking at uh, phase one, two, phase three, and a final phase four are located in this area. I think Steve had mentioned, maybe it was twenty, twenty point something acres, twenty point one. And if you actually, if you go through the drainage report that my partner Tim Coon put together, beginning of that drainage report, does give a pretty good description of what's going on in terms of the phasing of the drainage. But at any rate, this shows all of the phases in relation to what else is there. This is the construction yard. The construction office is here. Skip's garage is here. He's been processing materials in this area and actually throughout the area, probably, I don't know, thirty, forty, forty years. I mean, I've known you for over thirty years and you were doing it then. So it's been a long time. So the facility anyway, would, would, we would start with phase one, which is out here on the easterly side. Uh, it's about five and a half acres in size and it includes a sedimentation basin. And the drainage report talks about the basin. Basically, the area that's out here now is, is all unvegetated. It's all been used for decades for different types of construction activities. Uh, processing, storage of materials, uh, equipment, storage and various things. So it's bare ground. It's a silty play, maybe a little bit of sand. So there's, there's a fair amount of runoff that comes off of this. The final version of this plan, if it gets completed with all of the filling, would all be vegetated. It's all going to be grass. So that should be less runoff. So there's no reason for detention. Stormwater detention would be required because we've got full runoff now and we're going to reduce that. But we are required for treatment. So we've got a sedimentation basin. It's located over here to the east of phase one, and that has to be built before any of the filling takes place. So basically, we're routing all the storm water through that basin. It's got a resonance time that allows any sediment to come out. And then it leaves through an outlet structure and continues on its way down through the back. Actually goes through another basin, a said basin that was part of the original landfill that's still in place. Gets through that, eventually finds its way to the Skidnack River. So the drainage report that was submitted that Tim Coon put together is in your package. Uh, I think the town engineer Len Norton reviewed it. You had some comments from him with regard to hours of operation, which I'm sure we'll talk about as we move forward, but other than that, I don't think there's any comments in regards to it. So phase one, phase two, phase three, uh, we're up around five hundred or maybe a little more than five hundred cubed, five hundred thousand cubic yards. And then the final phase four is actually the sedimentation basin. Once this is completed, really is no longer needed. So that can actually be filled in and vegetated itself. The storm water routes its way around it and swales and continues through the existing basin down here and finds its way out to the river. In terms of the grading of this itself, it's kind of domed in the middle, creates subtly, creates northerly. We are installing swales along the south side, along the northerly side. Swales carry water all the way around and into the said basin. Goes through the basin, settles outlet structure, back out and through an existing swale that follows its way down here through the side. So that's a basic overview of, of how the actual grading is going to take place, how the drainage works. Uh, there are S and Es in place. There's silt fence that basically surrounds the entire facility here, here, and here during the construction phase. And I think I thought here for a second. I was going to tell you something else. I don't know what I was going to say. Silt fence, said basin, swales, the swales as well, could be constructed early on before any of the filling takes place because we want to make sure we capture all of this water and get it to the sedimentation basin. Skip's got some, some drainage that he's built out there now. There is a part of the swale here. He's got this tip, so it comes back into the site. So he's actually already done a pretty good job of, of taking care of the storm water here, uh, and preventing erosion. But we're, we're going to add some more here to here. Uh, the other thing that's in this plan that is also required in your regulations are control points, there's control points that surround each phase and that will be installed phase by phase. So it's basically a delineation of the phase. So that we're out there on the ground, we've got marks on the ground so that the operators know, okay, we're in phase one, we need to be here. And here's a delineation. It's actually marked out on the ground. We get the phase two, same thing, and it files its way right back. That was something that you put in place probably twenty something years ago. I don't remember exactly with one of the other gravel pit operations at town where there was some issues occasionally was the control point, uh, requirement that was added to your regulation. So they're shown here and they will be installed again on a phase by phase basis. So that's a basic overview of, of how it would operate. Uh, getting trucks here coming in and in and out right on route one forty. Assumably, you're going to use the sixty truck per day limit. There's a little verbiage in there, I think, that talks about that maybe in narrative. Um, that's what's been typical for all your gravel operations. I'm not thinking this is going to be any different. We can talk a little bit of hour, about hours of operation. But again, that's a basic overview. There's a, if you run through the plan set, there's a, a larger scale plan that shows the phases through the flip of the next sheet. That's just a different scale. It's a little larger. You can see the phases. You can see the basin, the outlet structure. If flip to the next page, we've got oh, that's the final phase. Okay, that's the final phase of the grading. Uh, the basin is filmed at that point. The last page is the construction details. Oh, there's, there's my sheet here. Maybe the construction details aren't in there. But that's okay. Construction details show the outlet structure, the drip wrap, the swales. Seeding schedules and so forth, because everything obviously needs to be seeded. So I think it's got all the information that's required in your regulations. Uh, as I said, the town engineers reviewed it. And his only comment was with regard to hours of operation. So if anybody has any questions.
Oh, got some. So the next component, it's the engineering component, another major component that differs from the original application and management is how the soil is actually going to be managed for the facility itself. So if you go to the next slide, just to give a little background, and as I mentioned, for polluted soil to be used at the site, you have to show that there's impacts previously. So this app that's up on the screen now or twenty is DEP's groundwater classification. So it's classified as GA, which without treatment, uh, well, the area would be results of public water, maybe on their way. But the pink area that's shown on there is GA impaired, which is likely associated with a landfill that's been closed in place. But, but that's showing you is that there are already low level impacts to groundwater that are present. It's not pristine, if you will, at this point. The next one. So just to kind of go over that, that couple of differences. One, the original application, the process for acceptance was, somebody calls up Skip. There's going to be soil bins at the site itself. They put it in soil bins, they test it, they determine if it can stay there or not stay there. And then it's taken care of at that point. We're changing that up to be more, uh, consistent with what soil handling procedures are, guidelines are with DEP and everybody else. Where somebody would call up Skip, they basically would say, we have this much material. Then they would contact an LEP, sorry, myself, but an LEP that would then have soil testing done before that material is brought to the site. They would have to produce results. Soil management plan kind of details what parameters. They're like typical parameters that we look at. They're talking about organics, semi-organics, pesticides, herbicides, petroleum hydrocarbons and PCBs. That's general screening criteria for those sites. They produce those results with comparison to the remediation standard regulations. So then we have actual analytical data that is referenced to that material that we're proposing to bring here. You either then put it into kind of two phases. You say, okay, this is the standards. They can come and it's natural soil. They either put it in the filling pile or they're managing it on the site, screening it, reusing it, mixing with topsoil. There's nothing really stopping them other than the special permit conditions, nothing from the state side. If it's polluted soil, that's where, hold on, I get commissioner approval from DEP, go through a process. If they approach, give approval, then with the special permit approval, that material will be brought and used as fill. That material would not be processed, mixed together and dissected off. That's not allowable to the RSRs. Um, next slide. So this is just an overview of that system that I kind of discussed in the soil management plan. It's like one of the major differences that we have in previous application. Now, there's actually going to be analytical data associated with it that is moved here or sold here. It's going to be retained with our records so that the town does want documentation of what those results are and can be produced to you. Um, they'll maintain at the facility itself. So that's a big difference. And this kind of goes through the natural versus the clean fill versus the polluted. Then in kind of closing, so as part of this as well, is kind of what the long-term potential reuse of that site could be. Because all this is dependent on, well, what happens? Is this just going to be a big mound up? So the way it's being done now, or under this proposed plan, all of it would meet the clean fill kind of designation, which would give us unlimited kind of use in the future, come up with a plan. All this material would meet residential criteria. So our primary kind of concept has been solar for the sake that it's kind of a landlocked parcel somewhat. It's already a previously impacted site. Instead of taking up agricultural land or land that could be more suitable for other uses, this is something that's been commercial for decades. You basically would come in with a site plan approval because this grading wouldn't work for solar necessarily, but with minimal, well, not minimal effort, but with effort, you could regrade that site without really any limitations under site approval for solar. And that goes for even a cell phone tower use or even residential, which would probably be the I don't see slightly scenario only because of, it would take involve an entire site characterization of the entire property. It would take remediation of the entire property. But one also benefit to this is that this material, if you went residential, could end up being used as clean cap, which in for DEP regulations, like we develop sites that are polluted, you can come up with an engineer control, which is like four feet of clean material that renders that low level stuff inaccessible, and then you can build upon that. So we already have, we would already have surplus of that material that could be used for that down the road. And since we're talking twenty, twenty-five years, who knows what the town needs at that point, but there's no limitations to what this material is be able to be reused. And I think that's the big, another designation between what a landfill is and kind of just a filling operation as part of construction.
No, but I'm certain there'll be questions.
So with that, that's kind of like open to any questions that you may have towards the application. So.
Stacy, you have any questions?
No, because I'm making a little bit of a
So, um, I'm kind of getting mixed signals from you guys. One of you says that it's a, if you're bringing debris in and reusing it to fill. Another one of you says materials coming in and sometimes it could be for sale. Is, are we strictly filling or are we filling? Is, are we strictly filling or are we filling and selling and being an actual?
That's actually two different parts, actually, that exists already in a construction yard.
This is not the construction yard, this is. Correct.
Yeah, this is, this would be.
Strictly fill.
No, no, uh. No burying of that type of material, that this is strictly the fill that we're speaking.
What's gonna keep one separated from the other, what's gonna prevent the truck driver from veering to the left instead of veering to the right?
Uh, it's distinct, it's distinct, like in in this property and the, you see how the breakdown of the phases, one through four. Uh, there'll be, there'll be a distinct dumping area for this clean fill per se. Uh, if you're familiar with with the construction, we'll be pushing it with a dozer. Uh, the dozer operator doesn't want to travel a hundred yards with that machine, Skip doesn't want him to either.
Right.
It's, it'll be.
I'm more worried about the truck driver not knowing where he's going and he's dumping at the wrong spot and everybody went, oh geez, now what?
Yeah, no, no.
That's my first, my first question is that, that we are, this specific area is just to bring fill in, nothing else.
Right, it will be distinct.
Okay.
One of the things, and and this is to clarify, just because in in a working environment like this. For instance, that truck comes into the yard, they don't just, uh, they don't just go dump. So that truck comes in, it needs to check in and there'll be signage accordingly. The truck comes in, has to check in, has to carry a, uh, they'll, they'll carry a ticket. From the scale house, we'll call it, from the office, they'll be told where exactly that they're going. They'll sign off on that ticket, of course, I think there needs to be a receipt for both the customer at the other end. And of course, for 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 this side of it, they'll be told exactly where to dump. And then from there, they'll, they'll go ahead and dump and then exit, that's the same way.
And who's gonna be monitoring to make sure that the sixty trucks that are coming in a day? Are the actual sixty trucks coming from where they're coming from, so we don't get a stray truck coming from.
No, I.
An undesirable place, leaking stuff down one forty and.
Yeah.
Rolling into it.
And that's a good.
Giving us where we are now.
Where I come from, I come from, uh, I was a, uh, operations manager for a contaminated soil facility. And something like that does come off. So when any of these jobs take place, there is communication between, there will be an environmental company at the other end. And there'll be a plan in place for what these are, they're not just shipped willy nilly. In the, in the interim, in the, the day before, we'll say, in a perfect world, they'll call in and they'll say. We have ten loads to come to you from this particular site. Of course, then it has to be double checked that in fact, this material has been checked out. Certain that they have what they have, that's why we deleted out initially in this, in this, uh, this company, there were bins in place. And this is how some businesses choose to do this, they would place all material in these bins. They would be tested out at that point, and if they were deemed acceptable, acceptable levels to dump it at a facility like this. Then they would in fact be taken from those bins and placed in the, in the. Right.
Yep.
We deleted that out. In the case that the customers had this tested out, they've been checked over by the, uh, by an L E P. And they've in fact been cleared to be taken into this facility is the only time they're coming.
All the burdens put back on where it's coming from, not.
Exactly. A paying customer incidentally.
Yep.
So that night before, there's ten loads coming in, these are a roster of your trucks, this is what I've required from the contaminated. So facility, that's a higher regulated, but this is, this is how we intend to run this as well. There'll be X amount of trucks, they will come in, these are the timeframes that they can come in. There's so a stipulation, we would. If it's heavy rain or something like that, things like that get canceled out, it's construct, that's not unusual, even if it's just. You know, material being moved from wherever, just safety purposes and 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 various other things. But that is another stipulation that's put into play, so it's regulated. And it's a paid customer and you have a constant communication with the customer on the other end, which is an environmental. Uh, it'll be an environmental company at the other end.
So are you the one that's running it or is Skip running it? Skip runs it, so. You answer to Skip then, is what you're telling me, so if he tells you to do something else, you're. Okay, and I'm sure he does too, but that's really now. My concern is.
Yes, no, Skip is, Skip is in check. Yeah, I just bring the experience and and Skip has way more than I.
Will there be an L E P onsite?
Not onsite.
Not onsite, but on.
Not initially, uh, if the, if the, if the business, you know, gets moving at a higher pace, then it may be required at that. I certainly don't expect it. I mean, there was twenty-seven thousand yards taken in over a period of years, I I certainly don't. However, an L E P is the one who monitors everything that comes, that comes into the yard before it even sets pace up for. Yeah, it has to be, it has to be.
But we tested all the ground now to make sure there's no more pollution.
We have.
There's no pollution anywhere, everything's clean now.
Well, by clean, it's below criteria.
Right, below criteria, exactly.
Correct. Actually, all of the test holes that they did are shown on these plans, I can show them to you, but they did extensive testing.
Okay.
Scott active.
Then, yep.
Yes, he does, yeah, he works for a.
And then we talk about, uh, security. So what type of security are we gonna have to make sure trucks aren't sneaking in after hours?
And and dumping for free?
And dumping for free.
Dumping.
Or dumping on a Sunday.
Cameras in place now.
Or dirty film.
For, yeah, always, you know.
Well, anybody that enters that yard, is there going to be a gate in place on the one entrance that comes in and out? It's something that we've talked about.
Yeah.
Yeah, it is something we've talked about.
It's in this, it says there would be, and in this document, it said that there would be.
There will be, that's, yeah.
For site security.
For site security at some point, right now, we have cameras in place to monitor. It's an open yard now, and whether or not people come in and out, it's recorded on, we have cameras in place now.
Those are the things that concern me the most is. Obviously, how we got here, why we're here now.
We used to use cameras as well, uh, and it would be, you know, it, it would be something that we would check back on our cameras also. If, uh, if an L E P at the other end had a question of. I had a truck come up there and supposed to check in with you at approximately two o'clock, have you seen them? I don't recall, but let me go back on my cameras and check, and you could go back on the cameras and say, I haven't seen that truck yet. So they'll, you know, find out if there was a breakdown or whatever the case may be. And it's not uncommon when, you know, you're monitoring this kind of truck traffic, they're promising you ten loads, eight showed up. At the end of the day, where are my other two trucks, did they dump in the wrong facility?
Did they dump in the wrong spot?
Yeah, exactly, well, they, they would want to check in, any, anything that comes in or out, if the truck comes in and they're not gonna get paid. And they like to get paid.
Yep.
So there is, you know, there is that, you know, there is that to, uh, to keep in place as well. But, um, there is a constant communication between the site. Who has interest in making sure that there is a paper trail according to what it is that they've done, they promised them loads. We've got eight, where did the other two trucks go, it's the onus is on site at that point. But at that point, at the end of the day, the environmental calls, they say, I only have eight, eight loads received here. I only have eight loads that came in, it's the onus of the environmental company to find out exactly where those trucks are, they broke down on the road. Are they coming?
Okay. Uh, at sixty trucks a day, say the scenario was sixty trucks a day.
Right.
Do you plan to be able to handle that much or you're gonna have to stockpile it? Or are you gonna be able to process sixty trucks a day, so are you gonna end up with a backfill of a?
Right.
Hundred foot high dirt pile someplace that i- is just gonna run off everywhere and. Go into areas that it shouldn't be and we didn't get a chance to catch the L E P with that little bad pile of dirt there that.
No, well, anything that comes in there, by me, will always be pre-checked, so it's going to meet the criteria. If you're gonna stockpile, yes, I agree, will there be times that the bulldozer breaks down? Uh, the loader isn't able to move, whatever the case may be, will it be stockpiled temporarily? I've had to stockpile material in an isolated area on one of the four locations, we'll say. That would get stockpiled temporarily, mostly because of the nature of the material that you're taking in. There's a big difference between, we're gonna say, spreading out standing gravel or whatever the type of materials, if you're talking about a heavy clay. It takes a little while longer to move that material, to spread it out accordingly to where it needs to go. Do you tell me you're gonna still have to?
Drop it in, uh, say, phase, no, no, phase three? It'll still go in phase one?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, just a different area within phase one.
Correct, and that dozer will work off of that, that stockpile.
Okay.
And it is not uncommon in the environmental field to upset a customer by saying. Look, if we took in forty-two loads yesterday, I'm a little backlog, I'm sorry, we won't be accepting any material on Friday. To get caught, it's unusual at all, ergo, the same thing with Mother Nature showing up. Sometimes she has a mind of her own.
Yes.
That does upset customers as well, but it is part of the business. It's gonna rain for two days, I'm sorry, we're, we're, the facility is torched. On Thursday, Friday, the weather's gonna be harsh, we can't, we can't be moving material, it's just gonna be too difficult on the machinery.
Uh, how often will this, you mentioned in section three, seven inspections, how often will that L E P be there to inspect?
As often as we need, now, there's also different parts to this, as this is getting put together in the different areas. That the L E P will have to be onsite, there has to be, correct me if I'm wrong, the, uh, D wants placement.
Yeah, so when you get D P approval, um, part of that application is where that placement of material. And you have to give them a general location of where this, this is for the, just the polluted, where the polluted soil will end up, general locations. It can vary a bit, but that's where that inspection would be, so that's where, another question for him is. The D P approval is for a certain volume as well, so that manifesting of the loads and everything that's associated with that job. Is maintained with that in that document, so that if D P does come, they can say, this is where the material is designated. Inspected, and here's our documentation, because that's the biggest thing that's been the missing piece, and from my review. It's been a document.
Okay.
Covers me for right now.
I am struggling with a number of things, um. So the sixty trucks and whatever hours of operation.
Okay.
That's in addition to the current operation, so if plus sixty trucks.
No, no, it's sixty trucks.
Total, the current operation plus.
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um.
The hours of operation also, we, uh, we've been, I had a mail back at work. And I believe that that's, uh, seven thirty A M to five P M, Monday through Friday. I believe is what we would have the followers. I, I believe that to be.
I'm thinking about the neighbors and if the trucks are backing up and they make that beep beep noise, you know, in the middle of the night and that kind of thing.
Sure.
So.
Sure.
So it is only Monday through Friday, because this is Monday through Saturday.
Standard in this eight, section eight fourteen.
In a perfect world, I would love to see a half day Saturday, it's one of those days and that I use as a makeup day. In the event that Tuesday didn't ban out or just raining, whatever, but if the town won't allow it, then it makes you.
Yeah, the soil management plan refers to what was previously approved, so I just carried that over.
Okay.
Right.
Where that time comes from.
Yeah.
I carried over from the previous approval.
I think it looks to do enough to see if there was any place where the commission would be able to give a waiver to it, and I didn't see anything.
In a perfect world, I'd love to have a half day Saturday.
Then I think about the, okay, there's natural, there's the clean soil, and then there's the other. Which, the name for, um.
Polluted.
Polluted, okay, and if it's a detected. And D P can approve it to come in. There's a list on page four of laboratory waste characterization.
Right.
And there's nothing about radiation and there's nothing about P F O S.
P F O S, yeah.
So given there's other pollutants and other things. Is it even tested for that and D P approves it? And how many, I think of a big truck full of dirt. And if you took one sample out of there, you may miss the whatever is in there.
I guess.
It's not a uniform thing.
Sure, I would.
So the sampling methodology for it would be one per five hundred cubic yards, which is a pretty standard construction operation, one sample per five hundred.
What does five hundred cubic yards look like to somebody like me who doesn't?
It's about thirty loads, a little less than thirty loads, actually.
Traffic's trailer loads.
The sixty loads per day in a drive, what are twenty nine hundred and sixty yards?
So now that's for waste characterization for acceptance, so the sites that you're talking about, if it does come to polluted soils. There's of course some investigation that's associated with that, so for instance. If developer has a set of soil, they know what the pollutants of, or can, we call it contaminants of concern for that site would be. Say it's an apple water truck, and you're not gonna sample for, um, B O Cs, it's not really, you're gonna do it for waste characterization. But their investigation data would more be driven by arsenic and lead and. So on top of their initial investigation, they have a stockpile, they're cleaning up for that reason. Or putting it in a segregated pile because they want to build something and need to get rid of that material. We ask for those additional, the, the parameters that are in there, like just the standard that have promulgated standards to them from D P. Like radon or the.
But if it's. There had been a fire and they had sprayed the foam on it.
So under that scenario, the site investigation would require the P F O S as part of that. For the waste characterization, that's, we could, that's one, but that's the standard list that you do for just the industrials. Almost every contamination facility has a very derived list that's similar to these that are provided. It's kind of like the screening tool for almost everybody, um, but that's.
I guess.
And kind of the beauty part of this is that you have a cop at the other side. You're taking it from, you're not taking it from, you know, from site to site to site, that site that you're dealing with is a. Police by N L E P.
Right.
But D P has. A tough. Issue in that there's not enough waste disposal facilities and they need to get rid of this stuff.
That's true.
So are they going to compromise because they just need to get rid of it?
Not, not in my, uh, not in my, uh, I've never seen them compromised. I tell them both D ban and E P and they don't, they don't compromise, they don't say, well, it's a little bit of, it's a little bit of contamination, it's okay.
But we saw one of the facilities in East Windsor that wanted to take. Material from M D C. That was dug up wherever. And it had naturally occurring radiation. How would you know that and how would you?
How did they, I guess my question would be, there would be. There would be, they would be active onsite and they would know that. They wouldn't accept it or it wouldn't, it wouldn't meet our criteria.
But are your criteria just these things on page four?
It would be the entire what's promulgated in the R S R, so everything that's listed, and if something's detected that doesn't have actual defined criteria. As an L E P, you're supposed to come up with one if there is not one.
Okay.
Which is part of the mediation standard, so when we're investigating a site, if we do have a. We'll go with P F O S because they actually only have released industrial standards now. Uh, but beforehand, we used to have to come up with our own industrial standard for, based on cancer risk or whatever is developed. They have pre-approved alternative criteria that's already there, that's not in the standard list, but that's where that comes in. So if you're talking about uranium or I think for the.
Whatever, you know, whatever it was.
That would be a containment concern, so from that standpoint, there would have to be a standard foul.
But here you have a site that abuts the Scantic River.
Mm-hmm.
Which is of concern to the town as a recreational porter. And as an L E P, how do you factor in that we care about maintaining? The quality of that water course and. I don't know, like the people are on wells in the vicinity, so we have to care above and beyond the minimum.
Right, I wouldn't say that, I mean, the criteria that's presented in the R S R is not really the minimum, that's the achieved success for projects. There to protect human health and the environment, that's why they were created. And we're holding it to the strictest standards, so we're at the residential standards and we're at the. G A standard, even though it's G A repair, we're still holding it to G A standards. That would be for the leachability of it, so. Those standards have to done, you have to do a leachability test on top of just what your mass is, and that tells you, is there potential for leaching? So when we clean up sites, those are our target goals, are those, never, it's not really. Background your goal, but a lot of times you can't aim that, so that's where those residential direct exposure and K F C come into play. There's other sites where you're trying to. Well, that's just, that's the standards that are implied, they're protective of human health in the end, that's the industrial standard.
Thank you.
So in layman's term, basically.
I'm the king layman.
Environmental services gets a call, they got a hotspot.
Yeah.
The hotspot goes to wherever, not us, everything around the perimeter. That's, they want out, that's not totally contaminated, it's gonna go here.
So, yes, so if you add, you have a, I have a project in Bristol, former mall site. And it's a parking lot, it's been a parking lot threat. They wanted to put a development there, so we went out and actually grid sampling, this is part of the investigation phase. Not part of the waste characterization, just the investigation phase, and we gridded out that entire area of those this building. We did the typical urban fill was our contaminants, so. Hodgepodge material under the asphalt, so you do that standard list that's in there is basically what we ran. We found areas that were polluted, because they had detections, we found areas that were. Undetected, nothing was there, and then we found two little pockets that were above criteria. Well, that stuff that was above criteria gets dug out, delineated, confirmation sampling's done to know that you met those end walls. That stuff sent off to an actual contamination facility somewhere else it's licensed for. Now they try to reuse whatever they can on that property, but now you have. A huge building that that material is just generated, it's just between natural soil and whatever, they stockpile it. Now what they would request is now that stockpile gets sampled. At the rate of one per five hundred for characterization purposes of panic coming. So it's, you have your initial investigation, then you have your stockpile of that material, then you have sampling of that stockpile material, which would then be approved or. Obtain approval if there's detections.
So the checks and balances the whole way through.
Absolutely, yeah, the customer wants to be effective.
Yeah.
Well, yeah.
Um, question, strictly just dry materials or would be wet materials also be allowed, like dredging materials?
Um, if you dredge, dredge is a scary word, um. But dredging would be allowable, but it still has to be, there are doors that have to be done. Uh, material is going to, they're just as strict. If not more than, uh, than a land, a land-based material, now, what I would. What I would say was that if dredge material were to come in, it needs to be. As a facility, it's not unusual to say, that's okay, but that, that material needs to be stockpiled and drained before it goes. And that is a D O T thing, that is for safety sake, so it wouldn't be unusual from the facility that I come from. If the material is soaking wet, and here we are in April, the customer's gotta go, he's gotta go. It makes the customer sad, the material has to sit, the material has to sit, has to be covered, and has to be, uh, water.
To leach itself.
Yeah, and that's a D O T standard. If, they call it a paper filter test, if it doesn't pass a paper filter, if there's water running out of the gate. That's a liability, and that's not exciting.
That's what I was trying to get to, is that we don't want trucks coming down our roads, leaching stuff out the back of the tail. So how come to a final elevation of a hundred and ninety?
Basically, uh, for the record, J R, we've got a certain area here that we can use, a very certain acreage. And your regulations allow three to one slopes, okay, so if we start. At either side and we start grading up at three to one slope. That's the elevation that we could get to, is, is that particular elevation. Now. What I did when I looked at it initially is I took a look over at the landfill to see, well, how high is the landfill current? And the landfill is up around. The very top of our. Not sure if I can read this.
I, I read it as one ninety.
Was it one ninety, which is right up here at the very peak?
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's about forty feet higher and then it continues to grade down, it down. You know, similarly, uh, these are ten foot, I think, that's on here, reach down. So if you take the three to one slope and bring it right up to the peak, you can get it up to that one ninety elevation. Which is right at the peak, forty feet higher than the top of what the landfill currently is at.
And road elevation is at about a hundred currently?
Hmm, that's.
It's what's in anchors drawing.
Is it?
Yeah. Back at you provided, I think it was, um.
Skip's driveway, actually, it's closer to one oh eight, maybe one ten, the road elevation when the driveway comes into the facility. And then it goes up a little bit. So I drove by there, well, I drive by there every day, over the tides every day. I've been doing it for thirty something here. Right now, you can't see any of it, we're piled up to that elevation at the top.
Eighty-three feet above the road? Is that because of the pile of millings in front of it?
You got full pile, yes, you can see the millings, but you're not gonna see this, now in the wintertime, when the leaves fall off. I'm not sure how much of it you can see, there are some fairly large white pine evergreens. Behind Skip's mom and dad's house. It kind of flank this, and it does screen it pretty well. If you were to go up and down North Road. And I'm sure some of you have done this, but you don't pay a lot of attention because we're just driving, but if you look to where the old landfill is. You really can't see it, I don't even know that you can really see it in the wintertime, it's fairly well screened, now granted, this is gonna be a little higher than that. But there is some white pine vegetation there that's gonna screen a lot of it, certainly break it up. And in the summertime right now, you won't see it at all, even at that elevation, it's, because as you look up in the road, by the time your eye looks over the top of those trees. You are way over the top of that pile, you're wide of sight. And that's assuming, assuming that it ever gets to that height, I think that. Skip and Steve would tell you, if this thing functions the way they would like to see it function. Which would mean that most of the soil coming in here is not polluted soil, it's not gonna stay here. It's eventually gonna be sold, because that's really where their profit margin is. And I'm gonna say it, they get paid to bring it in, and if they can get paid and ship it back out, now we're really making some money. And, and that's really what it's all about, so if it's gonna stay here, it might be thirty years before it ever gets that high, and if it gets to that. It may not ever happen, we don't know the answer to that.
I have to. I have to assume if it's permitted, it'll happen, you know?
It might, none of us may be here, but, but you're right, but now, all of that said, could he adds more white pines that would eventually. Screen the rest of it, and I'm sure that could happen. Um, you know, trees are, are not that expensive, but there's a lot of vegetation between North Road and where this is, and right now. Doing the balloon test that we used to do when we were doing cell towers, you're going to put the balloon up at the elevation. You won't see it, the, the trees are, are too tall. You know, if you've got a forty or a fifty foot tree that's fully leafed out. We're way back on the road, we're hundreds of feet away from this, you're looking way up over the top where this is gonna be. I'm not as old as Jay, so we're strong.
Like the balloon idea, that's good, I like that.
It's a good point, and I've looked at it, since we kind of got involved in this many times, I've driven by and looking, I really can't see it. Wintertime, you may catch it glimpse here or there, um, but not much of it, I don't think, this is. In world, I forget the distance, uh. From the road, I think we're about seven to eight hundred feet away, it's, it's a substantial distance.
So, I mean, it doesn't sound like you then would be opposed if there was a condition that screening would be provided, so to prevent it from being visible from the road?
I think some screening could be added, I don't think Skip is adverse to that, uh.
And it may be, it may be twenty, thirty years down the road that it needs to, and the growth of the pot.
I don't know if any of you remember this, but I remember when Skip built his house across the street. And one of the first things he did was he lined the property line, more or less, with white pines. That he had himself, that he took off the property somewhere, and he planted a lot. And. Right now, they're up in, how long's that, thirty years?
Thirty-three.
Thirty-three years.
Thirty-four.
You can't see outside of the line of his yard, now he did lose some of them in a storm over on, on one corner that's now on, but. That's the type of screening that you would want to see, and you wouldn't be able to see any of this, it would, it would not be visible in the street.
Do you have any, uh, questions?
Yeah.
I do, um. The one sample for. Five hundred cubic yards. That's load coming in, does that vary, given where the material's coming from?
Well, that's again, for just the shipping apartments. The investigation results are what's gonna drive the approval, so that's just probably least characterization for the shipping.
After it's been through. Screening. For cleanup or for development or like?
For the stockpile itself, well, it would have to be.
Origins.
The material.
Let's say you're getting something that has an area of concern. Right, so there's a certain level of sampling that's going in.
Yeah.
For that. What if material's coming from an area that. There's no record or reason to believe. There's an area of concern.
For development purposes? And, uh, the actual sampling, the one per five hundred would screen that material at stockpile. It's not part of the investigation, that's where they capture. And it's, buy one sample, it's a five, I guess I should clarify, so one sample per five hundred. The one sample is a composite samples, the weak sample stockpiles, you actually segregate that stockpile out. And you take five point composite. And you homogenize that into a container and provide that to the sample, so your one sample is not just. Here, let me grab the best looking material, it's a five point composite by standard, yes, I should.
Answers, and was asked, right?
Sorry about that.
You know.
The stockpile material that's there, one sample for five hundred, the one sample is a five point composite.
You pick where you're gonna take your five. Gotta.
Well, you take like. Yeah, so essentially your stockpile's, uh, a site, it's from an A O C or wherever, it's staged somewhere. They're designated that for total, the people that would go out there would take it, split it into quarters or whatever.
Okay, so it's like a grid, so.
It's actually got to be documented.
To you or whatever.
And it actually has to be diagrammed and documented, so that your composite sample is reflective of that quadrant, if you will. If it's, say, fifteen hundred cubic yards, you need three samples from that pile that are each five point composites from each designated five hundred. So that's how that generally goes, that's on top of, again, what the initial investigation data is telling. So they can, one thing you can't do is if you do have something that's over criteria in the ground. They can't go and just dig it up and throw it in that stockpile and hope it passes. Like that material would not be, they'd end up gridding out or hiding those, where the original. Materials coming from would have to meet those standards for the stockpile leave. So it's kind of an extra cautionary measure to stop from itself. Which is all has to be proven for the approval. That makes sense.
So when the state. Um, looks at the results of material that is polluted. In order for them to give approval. Does it need to be, um. Less polluted than the receiving?
No, it has to be similar polluted, so it would be polluted so by designation, so. So for instance, if I had, well. I know you said P F O S, but P C Bs is always my favorite, whatever. If you had P C Bs, even though it meant detection, P C B soil that's polluted would not be allowed here because they have no P C B impacted soil.
But you have. A property that has multiple things going on, it has an old landfill that's closed. That has, that only knows what in it. It has the center part which. I'm guessing is relatively clean, and then you have a construction yard. So which part would set the standard for this central part of the.
Yeah, so the central part of this, this area has. If you want to use, so poly aromatic hydrocarbons, so P H is asphalt millings kind of source material. Low level volatile organic compounds, which are like. It was the solvents or gasoline components, and then it's got total petroleum hydrocarbons, which are like gasoline general components, and then it has some pesticide.
So you're saying. Background for this site already has all this stuff in it, so you can take more light stuff.
Right.
From other polluted things, and it's not a problem under.
As long as they meet that same residential standard, so it's, it's not background as in natural.
Right.
Euros. So it's the only way that you're actually even allowed to take polluted soils on the site that's already been previously impacted with those similar constituents. So that's where like the P C B issue, even though I have it on my list for characterization. Even if they came in below residential standard, that would still be a no. Even.
Standards.
Oh, it needs residential, but it's not already there. So you can't, you can't take it anyway, because that standard has to be similar pollutants that are existing to put material on top of that. And since P C Bs are one of those things that aren't present there, because it's part of construction materials, it shouldn't be anyway. So they're not there as part of the evidence or a contaminant concern. So even if they had low level detections of P C Bs, it's still, it's getting kicked, it's not gonna come here.
But they can take in polluted up to the level of the site?
As long as it's. So, yes.
I guess.
So what I'm saying, say you had low level pesticides. At, from a soccer field that someone wants to turn to turf, and they have just detections of pesticides, but they're not above the standard. That would be accepted with D E P approval, the same reason. For pesticides, because there's been pesticides out there that are going to be. Above background, but below the standards. So then if we were pulling a track, and that track has arsenic or lead. That's below standards, that would be okay, but now that randomly there's a P C B hit, or. Yeah, P C Bs is like the main one, if it had just any.
Or uranium or whatever.
Yeah. Uranium wouldn't be one, if uranium was there, it's not a compound that should be at that site, so no, that would be. Which again, is not my saying either, if real approval goes through D E P, so you do have to satisfy their needs on top of what.
I guess the cynic in me says D E P still has to get rid of it, so find him a home.
I will say from my experience, that's not the case, D E P is usually.
Rigid.
Rigid on these things, especially soil use, because this is my experience with development and reuse of properties that are even. A school, even schools are having trouble with polluted soils, like it's just. There's, you can keep them on site, but then you end up building these burms. Like dredge materials a lot nowadays, they dewater them on site, they put them on a berm and then they cover them with grass. And that's allowed, but you still have to document where it is, still have to get. Now you have this map that's like, here this little berm over here. Touch that, but it's not really, even don't touch it, it's just, this is allowed to be used, but it's gotta be documented. And again, it's in documentation that. Feeling that's what's been the gap. So.
Well, that's making me think. So that's making me think about the naturally occurring soil, like natural, no area of concern, clean fill coming in and polluted material that's being polluted. Can't leave, right? That has to stay. And then we talked about regrading or material coming in and being sold if it's, it's good.
Truly clean.
Truly clean. Is that being handled separately if a load comes, you get a delivery that it's
virgin soil.
Virgin soil. Is that getting detoured out or is that part of the bill?
It would probably, if you have, in essence, if you have something that, that is natural and it undetectable, then it will call it clean. Uh, it gets brought to a different part of the yard. But that doesn't mean that you're going to pack it up the next day and sell it to whomever. Normally in a situation like that, to make, to get any value out of it, depending on, if it's topsoil, you're going to have to screen it, you're going to have to take out, you know, three ace minus, you know, and, and and to make it, or gravel, you know, things of that nature. Or you may even have to crush it to, to reach whatever parameters that make it valuable for a reason. But it will be handled in a different part of the yard.
So why isn't that not detected on the map or picked in on the map as to where these alternate stockpiles are?
We got the storage yard of today.
It's right in the very beginning of that yard right there where it gets, which makes it.
Where all the millings are over there.
Yeah, right in the front part there. Yep, that's where, that's where there's a screening plant right there. That's where any of that worked.
That's probably about the smallest area that you have available compared to the, this is the acreage.
And the beauty of that is that when you're bringing it in, you're reselling it soon. Right. It's a constant revolving.
It doesn't stop.
Can you, can you ask, you estimate how much material you have room to stockpile there? For natural soils, if you wanted to.
Really, I, I used to, I used to.
You can carry, you know, two hundred thousand yards there. Yeah, so I mean, there, there's got to be a limit to how much you can hold in that area.
I mean, an acre would be way more than you need, half an acre, we'll say. It's a constant revolving. There's a little over an acre in that area. Yeah. But that's, that's excessive. You don't, you don't need that thing. I used to do it on a quarter acre in a, in a company that would do ten times a lot. It's constantly revolving.
We have covered it. Will there be any initial and then ongoing groundwater and surface water monitoring so you know where you are? And if your approach to the testing is working as you go? So you don't get to a hundred and ninety feet and realize we have a problem and we don't know where it is. My experience is in something a little bit different than the, the filling, but seems pretty standard to have some wells in, get a baseline, start the activity and then be able to test so that you know that it's working. And as you go from phases, phase to phase, you can demonstrate that all of these things are happening as presented. And I think you'd want to know that you're actually taking in things that you're, you're supposed to be taking in and rejecting things that you should be rejecting.
Sure. Existing wells are on a land. There are existing wells because there had to be way back when. Is that something that we would actively do? It's not something I think that. It's not a deeper trials, but because at the other end, see, what we've redesigned here is essentially rather than taking in a multitude of various materials and deciding afterwards whether or not they could be put in place. The onus is on the customer and some of the expenses as well by doing all this testing. It doesn't enter the yard without being, without stringent testing. It, it can't even come there if it doesn't meet the criteria that is acceptable in the yard. So we, we want to, well, we're trying to take the guesswork out of anything. We don't want any guesswork. We want black and white. So before it even enters there, there isn't a question. I want to sleep at night and not think that I'm taking uranium or whatever the case may be. Yeah, I want, I want to be certain that anything that comes and enters that gate has already been signed up by deep LEP. People who, you know, to cite environmental company that's in charge of it for the customer. I want all, I want it all aligned before it even comes to the gate.
Historically, there has been landfill monitoring, so our wells present. The evidence that the groundwater is already impacted is presented. But as for monitoring from wherever their background is currently, it's not part of the application essence.
What about the storm runoff? Once we get down to our final detention pond and we're actually discharging into the Scantic River, do, did we ever sample that to burn and detect on that? What final water is being discharged into the river?
I'm not sure. I'm not sure if there's ever been a sample from the Scantic itself. I just know, the only thing I know is the classifications be so that it states that it's impaired, but I don't know for what reason. Could be coliform bacteria, whatever. But as for the runoff question, again, this material is suitable for residential. So the runoff potential, reaching potential of the contaminants is minimal risk.
Even, I mean, even, even, you know.
Total suspended solids wise, from like a stormwater standpoint.
Right.
Designed to be stabilized hopefully, and if not, we have the site erosion controls in place that's designed.
Just for the record, JR three JR, so just one comment with regard to the Scantic River. The state of Connecticut and Peter's somewhat addressed it already. I mean, the state does occasionally do sampling in river. Uh, I think the NRCS is involved, and I think the folks that sample are volunteers. But the state of Connecticut stocks trout in the Scanic River. There's no, as far as I know, no issue with eating any of the fish that are caught in the Scanic River, which would tell me if there was some type of contamination or some issue with the water quality of the river, that that would be allowed. It wouldn't be wasted their money to put fish in it and a lot of people to eat it. I've fished in the Scanic River since I was in high school. And I've eaten a lot of fish out of the Scanic River festival. The best shad fisheries in Connecticut was in Brock. At what they call the filter beds, which is just downstream, you know, when the landfill was old. And I've fished there for years and ate a lot of fish out of there. Still here.
Anything else?
Um, you could ask the commission to come out for a site visit.
True.
I just wanted put that on the table. Opportunity. I think.
And we would arrange that for you or, you know?
Yep, we just have to decide if you want to go in like twos, you don't want to have a forum. If you do, then you do want to have. But we can arrange that.
I do have a couple of questions, and I think one more time for you. Well, my main concern is about water, especially to your water table going below the water table. You've kind of covered a lot of that. Um, but also I've just been kind of looking at like, like this run or wherever are now in this GA, like this area that's got impacted groundwater issue. So just take me back a little bit in time. Originally, this wasn't impacted, right? And then all of a sudden the landfill comes and now we have this area that's got impacted. Like potentially, if you're taking, if you have pollution here and we're adding similarly polluted materials, that pile, I don't see how it ever gets smaller over time. Like, can those materials go out to another site from your site for the polluted category?
No, it's a.
Yeah, so, so once it's, once it's there, so like now we've got like, you know, land that's contaminated, like, okay, messed up. So let's add more of that quality here and even here polluted. So eventually we're going to have a big polluted mountain in there, right? Like hundred, hundred ninety feet maybe, right? And then when I'm looking through the plans and I could be reading this wrong, but you know, we start with a phase where we have this retention area and then this mountain that's going to grow and this landfill over here. So we're creating, you know, like a, a low spot and then a valley. And then another, because we just haven't really imaged that for people, you know, we've got all these flat drawings, there's a lot of lines.
Sure.
But essentially, you know, you're talking about nice clean stuff over here that comes and goes, comes and goes and keeps it apart. And then a polluted section that just kind of grows with time, but all similarly polluted.
Right.
And then if the next phase, you actually flatten out this retention area a little bit, right? It doesn't stay with a valley. If I'm reading phase four correctly, you start to then taper that as well. So you, you definitely get this valley and then you're directing it, like, does this brown area just keep growing? And is this neighborhood too close?
So the GA impairment, as it's presented, is based on landfill monitoring over time. So if it was actually like, there's GAGB, GC is your criteria, is that you be, be treating before drinking GA impairment. Basically indicates somewhere in history, there's been something here that's caused some low level background. Otherwise, there'd probably be big mitigation plans out there. Um, as for the polluted soils themselves too, there's also a requirement on, yeah, another pile shows a hundred eighty feet, but we can't actually do a hundred eighty feet of just. Pesticidal, some of the RSRs are limited to ten feet max. It would be ten feet of the polluted to fill grading in areas. And then it would end up having to be natural soil, if you will, for that.
So there's layering happening.
Yes, so where the polluted soil is brought in in initial cases, it's going to be used to almost backfill or regrade what's been disturbed out there to give you a base, if you will. The other part for the groundwater that's helpful for this site is, where's the clay? It was part of the site itself, there's a layer of clay that almost acts as.
So natural.
Yeah, to hold this brown to where it is now.
Which is kind of.
Okay.
And then again, with the material that is accepted here, the leachability, so it's not adding issue theoretically, or whatever you want to say, by standards, it's not going to be adding to any potential groundwater.
It's not going to leach.
Right.
Okay.
And that's part of the testing process is SPLP, synthetic precipitate leaching potential. So basically in the lab is that there may titrate through the soil. And then what ends up in the beaker at the bottom, they want to test on that. And that gives you what your leaching potential is, and that has to meet GA standards.
Okay, it's drinking water.
Which is drinking water. It's not drinking water standards, RSRs drinking water, it's DP standards. But it's based on the same cancer risk. So they grow that, this will not do that, the landfill, former landfill, what's in there? No idea what that is, but that's.
Yeah, whatever potential still in that landfill exists, and then this has a lot of science behind it, a lot of planning in place. And then I did notice my last question is that there is a little bit of new tree line proposed, I think according to the plans.
Sorry, what is it?
A little bit of new proposed tree line.
There is.
Yeah, so.
Right along the edge.
And, and we know pine trees, you know, whether they live so long and then they fall down. So you have to take them down. So I think it is good to have some sort of screening plan for this going forward. But thank you for your question.
Something just kind of triggered where we're talking about what goes there cannot leave. You did mention for future reuse of this property, it would most likely get regraded again to take some of the slope out. Where would that material go?
The property really is, there's not a lot of value into it just because it's impacted already.
So we're saying if you wanted to put the solar field in now.
If we were going to do that, and of course, then that would take a lot of the same type of work that went into this to prepare this, to say, okay, twenty-five years from now, we're thinking about what we're looking at is this, the town would like to see a solar, a solar field here. But this is what we propose to be able to do. What is it that we need to do to reach this criteria? We have the material there. We have the material in place, and yes, it can't, it can't leave the site. But what, what needs to be done, you know, in order to do that? But that takes, again, that would take.
Most likely, you would have to get spread outside this air, current area of.
The regs allow it to use, so say the polluted soil regs, the allow to use, to reuse it on site is unlimited in that it can be spread anywhere within your property boundary. The only time it kicks in for authorization is send it somewhere else to be reused. So the beneficial reuse of this material would be you'd have a stockpile there that now can be used to be spread over where like the maintenance, some maintenance garages and everything down the road are no longer needed. Well, that's probably one of the bigger areas of potential. So now those get knocked down, cleaned up or whatever. Now you can take this pile and spread it across, even the polluted portion, and use that as a cap, which meets your residential standards. Add four feet of fill, five feet, whatever it is, now you're rendering whatever's remaining there that can stay, of course, because you have to go through the process. You're not keeping stuff, depending on what it is. But you end up creating an inaccessible cap with soil that meets residential standards. And you're rendering the soil that's left inaccessible. So it's an alternative that would be available to us in the future. So it's not getting.
Be, be a pretty large scale project again to regrade.
Thing that we're talking about, like the three to one slopes probably wouldn't work in the capping of the dome the way it is. We would have to go through site and commission, you've got to go through all sorts of other approvals for that potential down the road, twenty years or whatever it is. But there's nothing to prevent them from moving this material around. So it's not, that's where the distinction between like that closed landfill, there's no touching it. You can't touch it, it's closed, leave it alone, there's not an opening permit, all of that. That's why we changed the grading from meeting that edge, it's now away from it. Because that can't be touched. This is different scenario when that is soil that's brought in. It's all regulation, you know, backyard, so.
Good. Hey, this is a public hearing. Is anyone in the audience like to speak on this application? Yes, sir.
Paul Anderson, did you know you made a great offer? I don't get in favor of it. Because of the nature of the facility. Go by there for a while. There was a mound of stuff that they tried to beat off the road. I don't care if I can see it, I'm not sure what the problem is. Not be big enough to make a ski resort. It's just a pile of stuff. You know what? If it's left alone long enough, there'll be vegetation on it and it'll be green. Non-issue for me. That's the way I'd see it. My standpoint is driving down the road, but I'm not telling you what to do, I'm just giving you my options again. But in general, I'm in favor of this. I am an absolute business supporter. I think people making money is the right thing to have happen, if possible, obviously, within the rules. You guys take over from here. Thank you.
Anyone else?
So we're listening to a lot of good questions, a lot of good comments and answers. Before I can think of a question, starting this, and the panel certainly has a lot of good questions too. I think Mr. Kevin, it's a company that's done a lot of work, a lot of work. Make sure that this is going to come off its approval as a win-win situation. He's got a piece of land that really is not very useful, at least in a term of interest, something that folks better. I, I, I think that's a go. I just, I, I agree with the whole plan. It seems like he's got a cover. You know, I have good questions too. The only question I recommend with we remove all these trucks, I think six to the trucks can now depose from it. But I'm sure that's part of the, too. I think that's regulation or skips across that or whatever, but a lot of potential. Take care of a piece of land that is really not useful.
Thank you. Anyone else? Is there anyone online that'd like to comment on this application? Okay. I think we should probably continue this hearing due to the fact that the offer's been extended for us to. the offer's been extended for us to do a site visit and a uh may help people get a better understanding of exactly what's going on. So with that, if you have anything else you want to add?
Don't have any at this point.
Okay, so it, we will not be holding meeting on the ninth because we will not have enough members available. So our next meeting will be July twenty third. Was nothing else? I'll entertain a motion to continue the public hearing.
I'll make a motion to continue the public hearing on application P Z twenty twenty four dash nine till our July twenty third meeting.
There's a motion to continue the public hearing. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Hearing is continued till July twenty third. Yes, everybody good to continue? Does anybody need to take a break? Okay. Next on our agenda is under old business, we have P Z twenty twenty four dash zero seven, site plan modification at two twenty five South Main Street, map twenty two twenty three block zero one, that uh zero zero one dash zero zero one, zone M one. The owner applicant is East Windsor Investors LLC. Who's here to speak on behalf of this application?
Mr. Chairman. Okay. Can Dr. maybe have my permission?
Would you please identify yourself for the record?
Sure.
Sign in. Sure.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, good evening. Record Carl Landalena, Anju's attorney with the law firm, baby and land later in this box. I distributed to you a few pages of materials. I'll take you through them. But before I do, I'll probably just start briefly kind of go over some of the things we talked about over a month ago. I noticed we have two two additional members that weren't here. They assume that they looked at the minutes or what have you in any event. Um, so this is a project that was approved um in October of two thousand twenty three, a self-storage uh project to be done in uh five phases. Um, the first phase was for four buildings to be constructed. Um, Mr. Stand who's here with his wife uh are members of the LLC, which is owners of the property and owners of the facility. Uh, at that time, the commission approved this project. One of the conditions that was placed on the project was the removal of a uh a structure that had been on the property for a number of years, back to the thirties and forties, I believe.
Fifty nineteen fifty.
Fifty, but which had been a residence. Um, Mr. Since Mr. Stanton owned it, basically been rented out um to tenants. And this commission placed a condition on the approval of the project that prior to the issuance of a C O for the four buildings in phase one, that that building lifted off the side and removed and placed somewhere else, or it would be demolished. Um, after working the site and um building the first four buildings, if you've been by there, you know that they're up, there's some other site uh amenities are there, so so on and so forth. Mr. Stan determined that he'd like to have some changes made to the site plan and as well as that, discussing with you the possibility of modifying this condition about the removal and demolition of the house that's there. Um, I got involved at that point. Um, I think I said earlier that Jay's office and it could actually represented Mr. Uh Stanton at the presentation before this board back in the fall of last year, prior to its approval in October. Um, so Jay has a historical perspective that that I don't have, that I was not involved. Um, so I talked to staff and Ruth and I had discussed the, I guess, what I would call the more you know, uh simpler requests, which were essentially several requests to move things around, place uh trees in different positions to substitute solid, solid vinyl fencing for some trees that were exposed initially. And I think the um again, I root here, you can talk to Ryan. I think what I came away from that meeting was, or not for the um the the condition regarding removing the house, that those things probably could have been approved by administratively by her office. Um, and just to go through those again. So there are some spruce trees that were approved, eleven in the northeast corner of the site, like substitute a solid vinyl fence for that. There was a uh solid vinyl fence proposed for suddenly boundary. I would now like to extend that across the entire boundary. We'd like to add a proposed location sign, shift some of the red maple to one south, Maple Street slightly to the north. Those eight of them, and to shift the ones on the on the other side slightly to the south. That would make them a more visible sign and make the sign more visible. Also revise the phasing of the project so that the initial phases four and five would now become phases two and three, and phase three and three would now be four and five. And to increase the width of the pervious pavement, we proposed building seven and eight in South Main Street. As you may recall, all of the hard surface is a pervious material. And the reason that was done was uh would accommodate, uh, I guess, the space and not require formal drainage structure. Such. Um, actually, that was, this is actually a site plan approval, or not for the use of that pervious material. There's a section in your regulations, fairly new one, I understand, which requires a special permit for placement of pervious materials into impervious asphalt on any site. So that's what triggered public hearings back in the fall and um and this deed for a special permit. The other uh site plan improvements would have been absent that, just a site plan approval. So I I don't think that anyone necessarily has any concerns about those particular items um in your packet though, in order to support at least some of those requests. There's a letter from James Blasnalis, who's property owner that puts uh uh this property and um he's concerned about the trees because the trees that are around the site now or that are near his property have been covered in our vandalism to the park back there. And then go on through the site, there's a police report that's attached of the recent vandalism um that took place, causing some damage to, I guess, one of his uh his machinery, his farm equipment. And um with trees that are there, plus trees that were proposed initially by my client, I think that it would even uh increase the chances for people to park back there and you know, uh the cars can't be seen. And then he uses his cover to perhaps enter this particular site try to break into some of the units and such. My client tells me that he also spoke to the chief of police regarding this matter and uh he told me that it's chief would have no objection. He didn't write a letter, he didn't want to do that, I'm told, but would have no objection to the trees being substituted, the fence being substituted for the trees. Um, so the first thing in your bag is that letter. There is also a few pages later, a police report filed by Mr. Blasnalis that you vandalized a lot of properties. So unless anyone has any specific questions or comments or concerns about those first seven matters, I'd like to move directly to the eighth one, which is our request to have a note removed from the plan that would require the removal of the prior dwelling, which remains on the site at this point, that the requirement that that be demolished and removed from the site prior to the issuance of the C O for the first four buildings, which are pretty close to being completed, along with the required site work that we're asking you to remove there. Now, one of the things we talked about last time was the status of this building when this property has re-zoned, I think. Um, at some point after it was constructed, it became a non-conforming use. That non-conforming use is protected under state and federal law. And it remained as a non-conforming use as a residence until Mr. Stanton came to here last year asking for approval for this use that permitted as site plan use in the M one zone. Um, he asked his tenants to move out and they did, and it's been vacant ever since. You know, things change over time during any construction project, and he's found that the structure itself has become useful to him in a number of ways. There's water there, and he's been using the water to uh help water the trees that are required by the site plan. So that's one of the things, there's electricity there and he has uh cameras on the house that that um are, you know, photographing the buildings that are there, ensuring there's no vandalism or entry onto the property. In addition, there's a couple of letters in that packet. Both of uh Mr. And Mrs. Stanton have medical conditions. And the uh the bathroom in the net structure is very useful to them. If not for that, they'd have to leave the site and, I guess, they're as close to back. And I don't want to go into too much detail. I think there's more from benefit, let's say, data statements about their conditions, but um you know, when you have those kinds of conditions, you want to have relief sooner than later. Um, so I did speak to the town attorney, Mr. Brian McCann, and we had a discussion. He actually reached out to me because I was talking to him. You know, it's something would be different. And he reached out to me regarding tangential issue, which we don't want to go into. Working towards satisfying the county party's request. And I mentioned this to him and we had a very candid discussion. And one of the things, again, I'm not putting words in his mouth, um, but I did send an email to Mr. McCann and Ruth Ann today with a proposal that I think um you should consider and hope you would. I know one of the concerns is that you know, what kind of guarantee or what kind of security do you have that this building is going to come down eventually? Right now, you've got at least insurance, which we're trying to talk you out of, and it would come down before the issuance of the C O. So um we had talked about, my, actually, my my um application did not really even mention the time, phase three, I'm not sure how it got stuck in there, but 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 let's talk about that. Um, the questions were from the commission that would have faced two, three, four, five, never, which is a realistic concern. These things are going to be driven by the market. Hopefully, the market's gonna be good. There's been a number of these types of projects in town and as well as other towns too, as people move away from their bigger houses and apartment-style living, these things have become very fashionable to have you hook it somewhere or just taking your fourth car in, I guess, or your boat and what have. Um, so my client is hopeful that he'll be successful enough to get to those phases, but there's no guarantee. We understand that. That's your concern. We understand. So uh one of the things that I've written to Ruth Ann about in our proposal today would be, we have prepared an affidavit, which is prepared in advance of the meeting a month ago. Uh, as you know, non-conforming uses do not go away. They're protected under state and federal law uh until they are abandoned. And the law on abandonment has changed over the years, especially the statutes have been changed. Essentially now to abandon a non-conforming use, you have to get up and say to the whole world, not abandoning this non-conforming use. It used to be that uh non-use of a non-conforming use over time, a year, two years, it was intent to abandon. That's no longer the law. Or you, you know, there are cases where non-conforming uses haven't been used for twenty or thirty years and have been reinstated. And the courts have said, fine, you don't, unless you actually give it up and stand up and declare to the world, you're giving it up. You have never given it up. So what we're proposing to do is record an affidavit, which my client has already signed, the original by my possession, uh banning the non-conforming use of this prop, this building as a residence. So it could never, after this is recorded, it could never thereafter be used for any non-conforming use. In addition, one of the documents you have in your possession is an estimate for the demolish, the demolition of the building, which was done by Skip Kevin, who, minutes ago, was sitting here. He's given us an estimate as to the cost of demolishing that building. And to ensure the demolition of the building, we are willing to put in place a bond of some kind, either cash or surety bond in favor of the town, in amount that's equal to uh the amount of the estimate or some reasonable amount that you might determine would be reasonable. Uh, given that we're asking for you to give us eighteen months. So it's not tied to the construction of any base that might or might have not occur in the future, asking that the building stay there in eighteen months. And during that time, because it may have some utility on site for a use that's permitted in the M one zone, we'd like to explore those opportunities. And if we can't find one, either for use for ourselves or to turn it into some kind of usable, rentable space for a use that's permitted in the M one zone, which would require a trip back to you for a site plan and perhaps even a special permit approval, if we can't find that uh or we can't determine a use that that we might have for, and within eighteen months, we'll have in place bond to to tear it down in the event that we fail to do so. You could call that bond, but in the form whenever you agree on, you know, it seems to me a surety bond might be appropriate here. And that would guarantee that the building would come down in eighteen months, unless we got approval from you to use it in some other fashion that would be permitted in the zone. So that's our proposal at this point. I think that um I think it's reasonable. I think it gives the client time to figure out what he really wants to do with it, gives him the reasonable use of the property uh as a sort of accessory uses to to what he's got going on there now, um solve some of his immediate problems. It gives you comfort level to know that at some point, it's even gonna be approved for another use, so the building's going to come down. So that would be our proposal at at this time. Um, I know Jay has a few words that perhaps he gave his history with the town, far greater than mine is.
Yeah, so J R Russo, when this this issue came up, I wasn't really too involved in this project, you know, most of it and uh I kind of talked about a little bit in the office about what was happening. And I started to think back on some other projects that came before this commission. And I guess I'm talking to Mike and Jim, maybe Anne, and some of the other ones I'm gonna talk about, maybe none of you because you weren't here. Maybe none of you because you weren't here. But and this goes back a number of years, in fact, probably twenty or twenty-five years ago. Uh the first one that came to mind was Al Ron Binka at Wagner Lane. He developed the first phases of his self-storage buildings there. Uh that property uh was owned by Al, had owned it for years and had come before this commission with. Various different proposals for development. Uh it was involved driving range and a pro center and condos and all wrapped in different things. Some of which were approved, some never built, but self-storage he did build. And there was a house there and the house is still there and it's used as an office for the self-storage facility. Now Wagner Lane is a street that most of us probably don't ever drive up and down, but uh. His facility is there. There's a gate that offices right up in the front. Serves as the office space. And I think as sanitary facilities for that self-storage facility. That probably goes back before any any.
No, before me. Well, I drive the road every day.
So you know what I'm.
My shop's right over there.
A little office building that's there. That's the one, maybe the the oldest one that came to mind. Uh the other one was a little more recent, was ACI Auto down on South Main Street. Similar property, commercially zoned, old house on the property uh. He wanted to keep the house and use it for office and storage space. As far as I know, the house is still there. Don't know what he's done to it, whether he renovated it or not renovated, but a similar situation. To this one where you had a commercial use uh coming in with what was a residential property that had been used. A rented home, I think, and I believe the house is still there. Uh and again, it was going to be renovated for office space for his use. Uh as the car dealership. And and I think probably Mike and and Jim were here for that, probably Ian too, I think. I don't remember, but it was before Ruth and and Mike certainly uh I believe. Uh that's another one that that comes to mind. And and those two were, again, very similar to what you're looking at here. This could be renovated. Uh maybe the business model doesn't go well. He never builds building number seven. Could this be renovated for some type of an office space? It probably could. There's one other that's a little bit different than this one. Again, on South Main Street. Going to go to you, Jim. I think you were here and that was Marigan and Fever developed a condominium. Detached unit development. I know just up the street on the west side from Stand Equipment was. I don't remember the name of the street, to be honest. There's. Fifty units there. They're wide in the back. And there was a house on. They know all their units. House remained. House is still there. Turned into professional office space. And in fact, some years ago, we thought about moving our office. It was too small. Uh but they did a nice job renovating and it's there. It's got parking space. It's got a garage space. Would have worked good for us, but there wasn't enough spare floor space, but similar type thing where they came in, new development. New condos and existing older home, probably thirties or forties, built, renovated. And turned into professional office space again right on five. Those are the three that popped into my head. I'm sure there's others. Those are the ones that I remember. So I just wanted to mention those. So it it's not like this is something a little different if phase four and building or phase three and building seven. Never happened. It is a potential use for this and it sounds like. Uh Mr. Stanton and Attorney Landelina have kind of worked out a belt suspenders approach where if it doesn't work. Things are going to go anyway. It seems to me like it's it's kind of win-win for everybody. It kind of got a package to get at this.
Once again, Carl Landelina for the record. So during our last conversation uh a month ago. One of the items I came in and I it just happened so fast. From Mr. Kentridge, who's a building inspector. I know that Ruth Ann's report mentioned also um. And there's an email from um. From Ken Austin, who's a fire marshal in the Warehouse Point Fire District. And also a report that some mentioned of something from the town engineer or comment. So when it reports, she indicated that. That northern town engineer had no concerns about, you know, the the proposal. It was uh the building inspector and the fire marshal. Now frankly, to be candid with you, neither one of them have jurisdiction over this matter at this point in time. And um I, the fire marshal even went as far to comment about the aesthetics of the fence. Certainly, we know that's out of outside of scope is uh is uh jurisdiction. Um and I guess his comments were similar to it might become a fire hazard in the future. Well. Um I suppose any building could could catch on fire. This is not, like, this is a big building, building nowhere. It's it's gonna, you know, there's 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 use in the site. It's uh, there's going to be people visiting. My clients, they are almost every day at this point and there continue to be people there. And uh so I I I think, and I actually talked to Rich um. Uh the fire marshal and I, again, I'm not putting words in his mouth by characterization, that conversation is, I think he realized that. Um his comments were above and beyond the scope of his uh involvement or jurisdiction in this matter. Um if there was a fire in there, then he'd have jurisdiction. He could go in and, you know, uh. You know, condemn the building or what happened, but until that happens, just because something has a potential to catch on fire, that's. You know, this is your decision to make. And I would say the same uh remarks for your building inspector. I also talked to him and I said, well, have you been inside the building? And he said, no. And I said, well, are you aware of any code violations on the bill at the building? He said, no. He said, I walked up and looked in the window. So to me, if he's not citing any code violations or anything over which he has jurisdiction. I I I, again, you know, I'm representing the client here, but I think his comments are. Not relevant to the issue. You guys decide whether this building stays or doesn't stay. Think there are appropriate reasons why it should. And I think that relying on the fire marshal or the building inspectors views or opinions. Must not be entirely appropriate. And I say that having represented this to Austin, who's the attorney for the fire. Any event that's a proposal, we consider it. Because I can ask any questions that we might have.
Okay, uh I'll start. So what you've submitted for a request for site plan modification. Is to forego the plantings along Abbey Road on the north side and replace that with fencing, correct?
Yes, correct.
You've also asked to install fencing on the southern perimeter of the property.
I believe fencing was going to be there anyway. We're extending it.
On the original site plan, it was just plantings. There was no fencing on the approved site plan. Um correct. The only one was the uh eastern border. Um which, I went back to the minutes from the meeting held on September twenty-sixth. And at the time, Commissioner Gobin asked about if there would be any fencing. Um to which Mr. Stanton said he that it is uh not a site plan requirement to install fencing. Um he felt it was adequate to just have his surveillance cameras. But under the commission's request, more for a screening uh purpose. He agreed that there would be fencing uh added to the east side of the property. Going to, yes, if Ruth Ann, if you could please pull up. Yesterday, there was a site visit conducted.
Understand.
Property.
Yeah.
I wonder if you could speak to what that is there.
That's a fence.
Um Abbey Road.
I'm not, I, you know, I mean, I have to ask Mike, I think that's the case, yes.
With the gate.
The gate.
Which is not part of the approved site plan.
That's correct.
Nor was it.
That violates the site plan that's been approved. Correct, yes. And we received a notice of violation.
And there is no gate even being requested in the new application also.
Well. I, you know, does a gate need special approval?
Site plan, if you you're creating a site plan approval.
Right.
You have to depict what you're putting on the site.
The gate doesn't, I mean, well, if you want us to remove that gate, if you approve this, put in another section of solid bio fence. I guess that's what we'll do. Or maybe we'll ask Ruth Ann for administrative approval for the gate, you know. But yes, that fence is being constructed, under construction in violation of the site.
As well as.
I'm told, I'm not, you know, I don't contact these guys. The fence guy was told that he couldn't start until after tonight's meeting, assuming we would have gotten approval. And uh he started prior to.
When did he start?
Started a few weeks ago and when Ruth Ann said that that was not on the plan. Uh Mike, the fence guy, put the fence along the back that you guys request. I paid for that. Well, I haven't paid for that. And right now, um I told him we need a defense because since the last time I saw you in the fall to your improvement. Los Angeles has been vandalized. You have nine living in the barn. He might have these robbed on April twenty-ninth. And and so since a year ago.
The question now is, why did he start putting the fence there? And when did that start happen?
My discussion with him, he he said that we didn't have to get a permit for a fence. And I thought by now, weeks ago, we would have been through this process. And I made a contract with him to do it.
Can you give me a date? When did he start? A rough idea.
It was after the twenty-ninth, it's April twenty-ninth, I think, robbery.
On June thirteenth, on June thirteenth, he received an email from Ruth Ann. Stating that there's fence construction that is not permitted. And then.
Stopped construction.
That's that's yesterday.
I had a phone call yesterday. Here's what happened. Got that letter, fence, the fence did start the construction that was on the site. And then Jim told the fencing contractor to stop, that we were going to come here for zoning. And we're going to have to go through the process. Unbeknownst to any of us, he hadn't spoken to the fencing contractor for almost two weeks. He showed up there with no approval on our part yesterday, or the day before, and started a construction on the fence. We had nothing to do that with that. I mean, he just showed up out of the blue and we had, and we got the the letter. I mean, it was, we have no idea why he did that.
I got a call at seven o'clock this morning and he went and worked there.
Ignorance and excuse of the law.
You'll have to ask your town attorney. I got a call yesterday morning, this morning at seven. I think you've, your wife has sufficiently answered the question. I mean, we did not know that this was going to happen. I'm not saying how you're satisfied, but has your question been answered?
Yes, it's okay. There's no doubt that they're in violation. They continue to do work in violation after being notified. On multiple occasions.
Yes, at least one other occasion on June thirteenth.
The fence on Abbey, sorry, at least the driveway.
Correct.
Yeah, that gate was up a week and a half ago.
So. Couple of, couple of points that I want to make is. That a site plan modification request is a matter of grace and privilege. It's not a matter of right. So what we approved originally stands until we modify it. So any of this work that was done outside of the original approved plan is not permitted.
Yes, I agree. This is the third time, but I agree.
Okay, commission is allowed to consider in their deliberations zoning violations. Applicants compliance with past conditions of approval and conduct of the of the applicant. The applicant has disregarded the regulatory process by commencing with requested modifications prior. To the discussion on modifications requests. Site improvements have been installed without permission. The fencing gate installation. Have ta- have taken place on Abbey Road and are not included in the original site plan approval. Or the site plan modification request before the commission. A notice of violation was issued this morning for failure to adhere to the approved site plan. The applicant has not abided by the conditions of the original approval. This has created doubt that any potential conditions on the modifications would be adhered to as well. The applicant should be ineligible for such modifications until such time the the site is brought into compliance. Working with the Z E O and the town attorney. So as such, I would attain entertain a motion to deny the request for this modification.
Can I just make one point? I want to make sure I'm clear. The violation is. I understand the fence is there when it shouldn't be. But the violation that say might remain, I can't remember a few sentences ago, was the gate. So either the the gate would have to be shown on a revised site plan.
Request.
Request.
Anyone wants to make a motion?
I'll make a motion for you. I'll make a motion to deny P Z. Twenty twenty-four dash seven for twenty-five South Main Street. Site plan modification for self-storage for the reasons stated by the chair.
We have a motion to deny. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Jim. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you.
You're welcome. Yep. Okay, we have no new business. So on to other business, we have our Z E O report. We're down a few pages.
Yeah, yeah, the first two I keep telling. Um one thing I wanted to report was we had the the zoning board of the. But the CEOs um enforcement action was upheld. One forty-two Main Street.
Okay, that's that's the car lot, but he came for a re.
He came in and got the new site plan.
And then did not want to follow.
Did not want to follow. He could have come back with another one.
Okay.
It doesn't feel like he gave himself uh space to sell cars in frontage. Finally, nine more, unit eight. Down at the bottom, ninety Windsorville. So that's at the beginning stages, which we sent to regulation in my there. Um two seventy-five Scantic, there's still uh an RV in the front. Had an RV in the front. I'm thinking something else. Yeah, I was, my conversation with Danielle was about. There's chickens and vehicles. There's chickens and vehicles. It still has the semi in front. I just remembered. Yeah, sixty miller. Suddenly, Dr. Trump. The chickens are fine. So uh, yep, and then she's, the two seventy-five Scantic, she's extended. I think they're doing some sort of renovation for there.
This is the smallest one you've ever seen it.
I know, she's. So thank you for moving along. So thanks for moving along.
Anybody have any questions on this?
Yeah, sir.
So.
To Danielle.
So.
All right, so we have nothing under correspondence, nothing under business meeting, no reason for an executive session. So if anybody doesn't have anything else they want to discuss.
I just want to confirm that July 8th meeting is canceled.
July 9th.
July 9th.
Correct. 23rd is the last. Correct, July 27th. Hey, no one has anything else. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Stacy.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Have a motion to adjourn. Do we have a second?
Second.
For vote, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned. I know what.